Are you guys ready? All right, I know that Mr. Nunez is going to be calling in, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order of City Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council and the City Council serving as the successor agency to the former Redevelopment Agency Board for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Mayor Potempi.
Present.
Mayor Mattis.
Present. And I don't see anybody in the audience for public comments. Do we have any public comments? I see no. Mr. City Attorney, would you announce closed session?
We have one item on closed session tonight. It is public employee employment pursuant to government code 54957, and it is for the city attorney position.
Thank you. We'll recess closed session. All right, good evening, everybody. So the City Council has our closed session, and now we're going to go into presentations. We have a little bit of a packed agenda tonight, so we're going to get right to it. And I'm going to first start with, we amended our agenda tonight to add National Hispanic Heritage Month, and this is an important opportunity for us to recognize individuals and our local residents here in Desert Hot Springs. Myrna Flores is going to come up and help me with this. I told her she's going to read, so she had to find her glasses. She does the same thing all the time. Come on up here. So, our Latino population is very important to us here in Desert Hot Springs. When you do the surveys in our community, you'll find that close to 60% of our community is Latino. And so, we want to make sure that individuals are recognized, and I unfortunately only know a few words in Spanish, not all of it, so I wanted someone that was very fluent in Spanish to speak this with me. So I'm going to read the paragraphs, and then Myrna's going to read right behind me. So the City of Desert Hot Springs proclaims today, "Whereas every year from September 15th through October 15th, Americans celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month by recognizing the history, heritage, and contributions of Hispanics and Latinos to our community and nation."
I guess I have to translate, huh?
You've got to translate this one if you can.
Okay. La Ciudad de Desert Hot Springs proclaims, and I can't. Reclama que cada año de septiembre 15 al 15 de septiembre, los américas celebran el Día Nacional de los Hispanos, reconociendo el mes de la historia de todas las contribuciones de los Hispanos y Latinos en nuestra comunidad y en nuestra nación.
And whereas Observation Hispanic Heritage Week started in 1968 under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and was later extended to a 30-day celebration by President Ronald Reagan.
La Observación de los Hispanos empezó el 1968 bajo el presidente Lyndon B. Johnson, y fue más tarde extendido a 30 días de celebración por el presidente Ronald Reagan.
Hispanic Latino-Americans have made merciful contributions to our culture and economy, and have been integral to the prosperity and enrichment of Los Altos in the United States.
Hispanos y Latinos y americanos han tenido una inmensa contribución en nuestra cultura y economía, y han tenido una parte muy importante en la prosperidad y enriquecimiento de Los Altos y los Estados Unidos.
Hispanic Heritage Month also allows us to honor and celebrate the key leaders, leadership roles, and accomplishments of the Latino and Hispanics in our community in different professions and sectors and to all levels of government.
La Herencia. La Herencia hispana es el mes que permite a todos honrar y celebrar a las personas de roles importantes y accomplishments. Irene?
(laughing).
Okay. En las metas que alcanzamos de todos los latinos y los hispanos en nuestra comunidad y en diferentes profesiones y sectores y niveles del gobierno.
Next time I'll print it in Spanish, so maybe it'll be easier for you to read it. I think this, actually, this is Councilmember Nunez's fault because he was going to be here today, and he's running late, so Myrna got the call in for it. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Scott Mattis, Mayor of the City of Desert Hot Springs, and on behalf of the entire City Council encourages residents to observe Hispanic Heritage Month, and do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month.
Y con esto está resuelto que yo, Scott Mattis, el alcalde de la Ciudad de Desert Hot Springs, y todo el cónsul de la ciudad. Encourage. Animo a todos los residentes a observar la herencia hispana, el mes de la herencia hispana, y de aquí hacemos que, de aquí en adelante, de septiembre 15 al 15 de octubre.
Let's give her a hand for that.[380.12][380.12](applause). Wait, wait. Myrna, I've got to actually present to somebody, and on behalf of our community, she's going to take this proclamation, and you've got someplace, a library or someplace you can hang it, maybe?
Yes.
There we go.
Take it to the library.
But it's actually, it's actually just really heartwarming to know that our community is so strong with its heritage here in this community, and to make sure that it is celebrated correctly, so thank you.
Thank you. (applause).
So, it is a true honor to be able to give some recognition tonight to a couple of our internship individuals here in our community. So I'd like to invite Leo and Julia up.[427.31][427.31](applause). That one doesn't open. You've got to come over here, this one, yeah. We put that in, there's a trick door, people walk up and they try to push it, it doesn't open. So first, I'm going to start with Leo. So Leonardo Perez Manor?
Manor.
Manor? I'm still going to get it wrong. I tried to roll my R, and you're not supposed to roll this one. So Leo comes from the city of La Quinta. He wanted to do an internship with the city government on, because he has an interest in engineering. So he actually came here through some friends of a friend who knew a friend that worked here.[466.53][466.53](laughter) But he actually got a time to come through. How many weeks did you end up spending?
About 10 weeks.
10 weeks total, got to go through every department, right? You still want to be an engineer?
Yes.
All right, so you want to go into engineering and be an engineer in the future, but this is what students in high school and in any school, in any grade, I hope they take the time to see what government's really about. A lot of times we forget that governments, the word government, and not real faces and real people, and when you see them sitting back here, these are the people that strive to be something in government, and they do great work. So, we're really proud of Leo, and we want to say thank you, and in recognition of your hard work and outstanding contributions to the City of Desert Hot Springs, we want to recognize you being here in Desert Hot Springs and fulfilling your 10 weeks with us.
Thank you so much.[513.12][513.12](applause).
And Julia Chavez, she, Julia, she came to me years ago, wanted to be a softball player and was going to be a pro, and then decided after I coached her that she had no idea, did not want to be a softball player at all. And I don't know if it was my fault or she just lost interest, but she was my dancer on the field. She loved dance, and she would dance more than she played softball. I'm just joking with her. But her mom came to me, and Julia came to me late last year, early this year, and said that they needed to do some work or some volunteerism for the honorary society? Oh, got it right, good. And so, we talked about an internship program, and our city manager was new, and he was like, I think we might have some interest here. And how many weeks did you do? Did you do 10 weeks too?
It was like four or five months.
Four or five months here. And she went through every department and got an idea about how government really works. And Julia, I heard that you loved dispatch.
Yeah.
And you might be a dispatcher in the future?
Yep.
And this is what it's about. It's about bringing kids and young adults in to talk about what government really is, and maybe inspire them to do something in government in the future. So, really proud of Julia, and thank you for, and again, we want to recognize this and recognition of your hard work and outstanding contribution to the City of Desert Hot Springs and interning with us. We want to say thank you.[599.12][599.12](applause). And we just announced that we'll be starting the Future Leaders Program, which is going to be running out of the Health and Wellness Center, is that correct? Or it's here?
And it started October 15th.
It already started, and they have six, six kids from the high school, let's say kids, young people, that are going through a similar type of program and are going to learn about government. But before you go, you don't have to, but would you like to say something?
Sure.[627.66][627.66](laughter).
Leo didn't seem as shy. Why is Julia backing up with you?
Um...
Go ahead, Leo. Set up the mic.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank everyone for coming. It was a pleasure to spend the summer here with Danny, Nick, Judith, Lynn, everybody that helped out in the department, especially in Public Works. I love being able to just take part in the meetings and just say a couple of words, and everyone was very respectful, and I love looking up to everyone, and I really hope to just follow your guys' footsteps. Thank you so much.[666.12][666.12](applause).
So Julia wanted me to translate for her. She said, "I'm good, thank you."[673.12][673.12](laughter). So we'll back up here and take a picture with the City Council. If anybody wants to come forth, you can take a picture real quick. And now we're going to have a presentation. I'm going to put my glasses away. Seroptimus House of Hope is going to present.
Just stand this way?
Yeah, you'll stand, and you'll see it up on the screen there, and then there's your clicker.
Okay. Oh, hi, my name's Nicole Yingling. I am the Executive Director of Seroptimus House of Hope. I have been with the organization for a little over a year, but I have been in this field since I was 23 years old, and I'm 41, almost, so a long time. I got into this field of addiction to help families because my own family suffered from the disease of addiction, and I wanted to know why. Why is this happening? Why are they like this? Why am I like this? And so I started my career path in this field in education, and learned that there's a lot of factors that play into it, such as environmental, genetics, predispositions, and a slew of other things. And so, you know, here I am as the Executive Director here, and I'm here to present on our plans to hopefully expand in Desert Hot Springs. We've been in Desert Hot Springs since before I was born, 1981, so House of Hope is older than I am, and we've helped thousands of women recover. We also used to have a sober living in Banning. So I'm just going to get into the PowerPoint a little bit, and that way I don't waste too much of your guys' time. I just press forward. The arrow. Okay. So we are a nonprofit organization founded in 1981, dedicated to providing treatment to women with substance use disorder. These women often need housing support to rebuild their lives, establish sobriety, and become productive members of society. We are currently a six-bed residential treatment center, 3.5 level of care, so we just do residential. We do not currently do detox. Since our founding, Seroptimus House of Hope has helped thousands of women with evidence-based practices, a program that includes therapeutic activities, mental health services, guided therapeutic activities, sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing, mental health services, medical care, physical fitness, we take them to the gym, 12-step meetings, church, structured daily routine, and as the demand of substance use treatment in our community grows, we are committed to expanding our capacity to meet the critical needs of this community. I'm sure you guys can see that we need it. Clients are referred through Riverside County Substance Use Care Line. We are only funded through the county. We have a Drug Medi-Cal contract. We also survive by grants. We are not in network with any private insurances at this time. So let's see. We're a 30, 60, or 90-day program. The clients get to choose if they're going to stay 30, 60, 90 days. You know, they help us develop their treatment care plan, you know, we don't tell them how long they're staying. Let's see, I don't want to go too much into this because it's kind of long. The program's goal is to reduce recidivism and reoccurring substance use disorder treatment episodes among low-income women of Coachella Valley by providing accessible and effective residential treatment services. We provide these services to approximately 40 participants annually. The program's desired outcomes are, sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing, that they overcome their addiction, maintain long-term sobriety, and improve their physical and mental health through continued access to ongoing physical, mental health, and reunite with their families and their children, achieve self-sufficiency, and lead healthy, productive, substance-free lives. So this was, these are some pictures of our house. It's a small, six-bed residential home. We do really well because we get women who maybe have disabilities and don't do well in larger programs, so we've been really effective in helping individuals who maybe have disabilities. We also do really well with people who have significant mental health issues that do not do so well in larger settings. So it's a very home-like atmosphere. They cook their own meals, they each take turns, they have their own chore list. But these are pictures of our kitchen prior to our remodel and our living room. So we've completely remodeled the house, new flooring, painted, new kitchen that was given to us by a grant. We are currently in the process of getting, remodeling our garage so we can have a private area for therapists. And then these are just some more pictures of the house. And these are some of our community stakeholders. We are, we work with Drug Medi-Cal, we work with CPS, we work with other treatment centers, Department of Social Services, probation, the justice system. So the purpose of this meeting is to discuss an opportunity that we have. It's the BH CIP grant that came out from Prop 1, and our goal is to apply for this grant and expand. We would like to help more women in Desert Hot Springs. And so our goal is to get the support of the, you know, the city. We want to work with you. We want your support in expansion. We want your ideas on what property you feel is a good fit, what area. These are just some of the properties we looked at. Lito Palms is already, I think, in, for sale, but we definitely want it to be something that you guys are comfortable with, so any resources that you have, we're happy to receive and look into. The grant is due by December, so there's a lot that is at stake with this grant. It's an opportunity that has never happened before, and it's too good to pass up. Our organization is also required to come up with a 10% match, and because we are so small, you know, we don't have the revenue that larger organizations have where they can bill at, you know, you have 30 clients, you are able to bill 30 clients and you can sustain. Our organization is very small, so we actually have more staff than clients in order to operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So our goal is to expand so we can be around for another 45 years and continue to help women, you know, recover from this disease and, you know, have children like the two that were up here, you know, that are successful and, you know, give back to the community as well, because that's what we do. So this is just a little bit about the grant. We are planning on applying for 4 to 7 million. I'm thinking a little bit more towards 4 because I think I can figure out how to come up with 400,000 as opposed to 7. So, you know, we want to partner with the City of Desert Hot Springs, and we want to get your support because I know there's a lot that goes into these huge projects, and we are open to suggestions.
Well, thanks for coming out, Nicole. Keep the conversation going with our staff, and if there's a decision for the City Council will make, we'll put it on the agenda and our regular business, but we really appreciate it. The House of Hope has been an awesome organization in our community for so long. I remember I was first elected to the council many years ago, Dot Reed used to have fundraisers all the time.
Yes.
For House of Hope, so I remember when they opened up the one house and gave us a tour, it's just heartwarming. I know we're short on time, but any questions? We're good? Okay.
I just want to say it works. I've seen parents get back with their children after a long time, being very healthy, and I've seen people in the house, and then they go and they work, and they become good citizens. So as, as it said, it works, keep coming back.
Yes, thank you, yes. Many of them work for the county and the city and have been very successful. As a matter of fact, one of my friends worked here, so it's in recovery, so we know it works.
Thank you so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then we have a presentation by Coachella Valley Rescue Mission.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us here. We're going to actually start with a few videos to show you an overall of the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, what we do, and then a couple of new projects we have that are actually under construction right now, to show you what we have.
Just take one minute and introduce yourself.
Sorry, I apologize. I'm Kristen Crawford. I'm the Development Coordinator from the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission.
Thank you, Kristen.
Please forgive me. Okay, so it'll show you just a couple of new constructions that we have coming up and how we're continuing to grow in the valley.
Our goal and our hope is to get them all cleaned up, Lord, and shiny and new and new, and back out into the community, into their independent living. My name is Darla Burkett. I am the Executive Director of the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. We're a place that you can come and get back on your feet. We get people up and moving, and feed them three meals a day, and give them all the things they need, toiletries, hygiene, clothing, everything they need to get back out into successful life, and it works. We have an 82% success rate after one year of leaving our program. We started in 1971, and over the years, we've helped just thousands of people. Services we provide here are skill training, case management, employment connections, and in-home living connections. We are funded 60% by Riverside County and State of California, and we are funded the remaining 40% by private donors. Here at the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, we serve daily 900-plus meals, 27,000 monthly meals, and 300,000 meals every year. Our outreach program touches 25 to 50 people a day. Our outreach program works with members of our staff, going out in the community and giving help to those that need it the very most. We have 280 beds that are filled every day, and with inclement weather, we can add 100 beds in our gym as needed. When they're finished with program, 90% of the clients leaving here are housed in our community. If you'd like to find out more about these services, please go to CVRM.org, and everything is listed there. What's next for us, we just are right now building in addition to the women's home, and we're also building a laundry facility, which is a training facility for our clients, and a thrift store right now across the street on our old property. We have been in this community for 51 years, and we look forward to another 151 years because there will always be a need for help. This is going to help women California-wide, usually right here in our own backyard. My name is Darla Burkett. I am the Executive Director of the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. Today, we're talking about the Women and Children's Center, Part 2. The expansion of this new shelter will be for moms and their children. That's going to add 60 new beds and a kitchen, a laundry room, privacy for the women and the families, so we're going to have cribs and people adopting bedrooms for the children. It's just going to be lovely and wonderful. Riverside County funded us with $1 million to start this project, and the rest has been from our community and fundraising efforts. We still need some money, so anybody that's interested in helping and considering a donation, please give me a call.
Hi, I'm Kristen Crawford. I'm from the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, and I'm the Development Coordinator. The Coachella Valley Rescue Mission is excited to introduce our new centralized laundry facility, a key step in our mission. This facility will handle all of the mission's laundry, giving clients job training in a crucial industry here in the valley. As they operate and manage the facility, they'll gain hands-on experience and learning essential skills for employment in our resort community. This initiative supports our daily operations and equips clients with tools to succeed in the workforce. This project would not be possible without the generous support and donations of our community. So, this is just a little bit more about the Women and Children's expansion. I don't know if you're aware, but our two largest growing dev and graphics are Women with Children for Homelessness and Seniors 55+. So we are tasked, or have been tasked, to build this new facility, and this is where we are right now, and our goal is to have it open by August of 2025. And that is the last photo I have, so that's where we are right now. The framing is going up, and we look like we are definitely on track to get that going. I just wanted to also share a little bit of information about what our outreach team does and how we work with the City of Desert Hot Springs. So last, in the last year and a half, we've had 16 individuals from the community of Desert Hot Springs brought back to the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. One that is actually, has graduated and is now employed at the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. Eight are currently being case managed, and they're not with us, so they're just being case managed on the street to get them housed, and we have about 12 individuals right now, either in our short-term or long-term programs, that are going through, and hopefully will graduate in the spring. The last six months, we've had approximately 300 people who have received about 2,400 emergency service items, such as food, clothing, water, hygiene, and any other services that they need, such as IDs, help with birth certificates, needing medical attention. We either assist with that or get them in contact with the individuals that they need. And our street outreach team provides services here in the city each Thursday, and anytime that they receive a call from agencies such as the Police Department, Code Enforcement, or any of the local shelters here. And I just want to thank you for your time and consideration and support of the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission.
Kristen, thanks so much for everything you've done. CVRM, even though you're miles away from us on the East Valley, you've always come up to Desert Hot Springs and assisted when needed. I just can't say thank you enough for what you guys have done, and I wish you the best on your project, and whatever we can do to help get the good word out, we'll do that. Any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to leave a few cards up here, just in case you need to get in touch with Eric, who is our Outreach Coordinator for Services, or myself. If you haven't been out and liked to come out for a tour, we'd love to have you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And we're going to take a recess for two minutes. For those of you that are here for the presentations, feel free to stick around for our four-hour council meeting if you like, but you don't have to. All right, we're gonna get started. All right, we're gonna call to order the City of Desert Hot Springs' amended agenda, regular meeting of the city council, and the city council serving as a successor agency to the former redevelopment agency board for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
President.
Councilmember Gardner.
President.
Councilmember Nunez. Mayor Pro Tempi.
President.
And Mayor Mattis.
President. Now, Mr. Nunez is traveling. He will be coming in any minute now. Hopefully, he's safe. Before we do our invocation, um, most of you who are part of our community probably already know this information, but we lost a longtime volunteer in our community, Marge Dennis. She was a longtime volunteer, 12 years with Food Now. She had a military background, and she ran the volunteers like a military, um, uh, machine. And she wasn't, uh, hard-hitting or anything, but she was very to the point in how we gotta get food out and how do we do it right. And, uh, she was up till, you know, not very far from her, her last day, she was volunteering for Food Now. So it's a true inspiration, uh, to, to know what she did for our community, but it's sadness that we have to say, after 88 years of, uh, life here in this, uh, this planet, she's, she's gone to, um, yeah, she was very faithful, gone to be with God. So with that said, we would like to stand and take a moment of silence for Marge, and then I'm gonna invite up Pastor Chris. Chris, how do you say your last name?
Alguera.
Alguera, I wanna make sure I said it right. And he's with C-3 Palm Springs Church, and he's gonna do our invocation, but first, we'll take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Dear God, I just want to thank you today for allowing us all to be here right now. Lord God, I would take a moment to, uh, pray for the family and those all impacted by Marge's passing. Lord God, I just pray that you would bring peace and comfort to the families. Lord God, I just want to thank you, uh, just start off with, with gratitude, thanking you that we, uh, could be a part of, uh, the greatest country on this planet, Lord God. And I just thank you, I just pray that you would bless each and every, um, council member, every chairholder, Lord God, um, and just renew, Lord God, the passion for the city and the heart for the people, Lord God. And I just pray, Lord, uh, because if they, uh, relieve the stress, Lord God, of everything else, Lord God, I just pray that you would pour out the blessings on them so they could focus, Lord God, on, on their, their passions, Lord God, for creating the city that, uh, they have, have dreamed of, Lord God. And I just pray that, um, Lord God, you would, you would strengthen their endurance, Lord God, running this race, Lord God. And I just pray that, uh, Lord God, yes, we know that prayer changes things, Lord God, but it's also the actions that we take. So we just want to thank you, Lord God, for, for Julia Chavez, uh, who is, who is, uh, put in herself, Lord God, to just take strides to, uh, become a leader in her community, Lord God. And just like each person here in this room who has placed on themselves to, to make changes, to take actions, Lord God, to, to make this world a better place, Lord God, we just, uh, uh, we just thank you, Lord God, for each person here. Lord God, we just pray that you would be with us in this room and give each and every one of us, Lord God, wisdom and discernment for the actions and the decisions that we make. We just pray you would just be here with each and every one of us. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
If you'd join me in pledging to our nation's flag, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you to everyone, and I believe Marge's services will be next, a week from this Thursday, on the 24th. I think the time is 3:00 PM at Grace Church. So if you're interested, I'm sure you can find some information on social media, or call Food Now, and they will let you know. All right, we're gonna move to the City Attorney's Report. Mr. City Attorney?
I think in this instance, the City Manager should give the report.
Oh, yes, that would be proper, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there is, uh, no reportable action, uh, from closed session.
Thank you. And we're gonna go to approval of the agenda. At this time, the city council may amend the order of the agenda, approve the consent calendar, remove items from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action, and add urgency items. Um, I did have one request, and I was also gonna pull Item 6 from the consent calendar, no other requests. I would, uh, entertain a motion.
Move approval of taking Item 6 off of consent calendar.
In approving the agenda? And is there a second? No second. Is there any public comments on Items 5, 7, 8, or 9 on the consent calendar? CNN, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now move to, uh, public comments. Brian Brodowski. And while he's coming up, I'll read the, um, what I always read. And we'll also show that Councilmember Nunez is present. Um, at this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council, so be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. Mr. Brodowski.
Good evening. My name is Brian Brodowski. I'm here tonight on behalf of Diversity DHS, the LGBT group here in our city. I would like to give you an update on what is happening with Diversity DHS. This year, we decided several months ago to not go ahead with a DHS pride here in our city for this coming November. Both the escalating costs to produce this event and the lack of substantial funds for this saddens me to report this. But the show does go on. Some of the events keep, that we are doing, uh, recently, we had a, um, successful bowling fundraiser in July and raised a little bit of money. We have an upcoming Spa and Soak on November 17th at Miracle. A plan for a town hall after the elections. Uh, we do continued Second Sunday at Dylan's for a social hour. We do meet at the library the second Saturday for our board meeting. Everyone is welcome to attend. And of course, we participate, many of us participate at playoffs the last Wednesday of every month. We look forward to participating in the Christmas parade and other city events. Diversity is in serious need of members that want to get involved, and of course, money. We try our best to accomplish this. It's really hard. We still feel, though, we are a valuable asset and resource in our city, as it is guestimated that there are upwards of 30% LGBT plus individuals here in Desert Hot Springs. We always appreciate the support from our mayor, city council, city staff, and police department. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Brian. Tom Mowen?
I'm Tom Mowen, 45-year resident of Desert Hot Springs. I'm glad to be here. Glad to tell our city at the Seventh Adams Church, we have a new head pastor. Met with him this morning. He's very interested in our town. I think he's gonna buy a house here. I had something happen to me, and I couldn't believe it was happening. I, uh, took a church member who had just become homeless to the hub, and they wouldn't open the door for me. They said I was a security risk. I couldn't, I couldn't believe that. I, I have worked with the hub for years, and they've always been welcoming, but Mr. Aaron Petroff didn't even want to talk to, uh, our, our homeless man, and I was told, "It's not a homeless shelter anymore." And I was surprised, I hadn't seen any change of use voted here. Anyway, I am concerned about that, and I was sorry that that happened. I did wind up getting inside and find out about what they do have going on. And it is a good city here. We have a lot of good services. I think maybe they could be understood a little bit better. And we still need roadwork in this city. The lines are still faint as can be on, uh, Hacienda Avenue, and I've been talking about that for several years, and I wish something would happen there. And, and, uh, things should happen quicker than, in three years. And the only thing I have to say is, is I've been told that, uh, I don't know what I'm talking about, about Varner Road, but I'm still getting phone calls. I'm still getting plenty of phone calls on our citizens that have to drive on that terrible road. Anyway, that's all I have to say today. Thank you for listening.
Irene Rodriguez?
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and city staff. I am the Executive Director of Cabot's Building Museum and a resident of Coachella. So I have a small, short PowerPoint. Let me see, I guess. Uh, I wanted to share with you what our second grade program, Making a Difference, uh, school program, we serve every second grade student, and it is our priority to serve every second grade in Desert Hot Springs. And now, this year, in, two years ago, we served 704 students. Last year, 904 students. And this year, we're gonna serve 12 elementary schools, and we're starting this Thursday with Cabot-Yerxa Elementary, uh, which they, um, they think their school, the museum's named after the school, not vice versa. And here are some of the images you see here are also two of the interns we had. We cooperate, we cooperate with College Core, so they provide, the interns are assigned to the museum, and they get actually paid in living expenses through their, um, school facility, university. We're celebrating Day of the Dead this Saturday, October the 19th, from 10:00 to 3:00, and we are honoring Sarah Flores Thomas. Um, she was a longtime resident for Desert Hot Springs and a firefighter as well. I also had an artist, Andrea Calderon, actually do an altar as well. We also will include altars honoring Cabot and Portia Yerxa, as well as Cole Ira, which is the founders and owners of Cabot's Building Museum. The, uh, we have also in the past honored previous Desert Hot Springs residents. We have honored Richard Cromwell III, Jack Webb, David Byrne, Francis Russell Snell as well. We try to focus on residents of Desert Hot Springs. This is some of the activities that you will see. We have a community altar that people could come in and honor their loved ones by putting a little skull on, on the frame, and then we have sugar skulls. It's, we have Gloria Mandonado, which really is about really sharing the culture and what Day of the Dead means, and so she actually makes the sugar skulls, and that everybody is able to then decorate it and take it home. And that's it. So make sure this, I wanted to show you how the pebble looks in the evening, and enjoy. I hope to see you on Saturday. Thank you.
Thanks, Irene. Uh, and Dirk, you wanted to speak on Item Number 2, right? Not public comments?
Yes.
Okay. I have no other public comments. Anyone want to speak in public comments on general items? All right, we'll close, close public comments, and we'll go to City Manager's Report.
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Williams to give some updates.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, mayor, city council. I am going to give some updates for Roberta on some upcoming events, uh, happening in the community. Uh, first, we have the Senior Scam Awareness Seminar that's gonna be taking place at the Desert Hot Springs Senior Center on Tuesday, October 29th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Anybody interested should contact the senior center directly. Um, following that, on Saturday, November 2nd, uh, we have the city's Dia de los Muertos Festival that will take place at Mission Springs Park from 4:00 to 9:00. There will be a lot of festivities there. It's a great opportunity to bring your family out, enjoy some music, some food, some culture, uh, lots of fun things happening. On Monday, November 11th, at 10:00 AM at Veterans Park, we will be holding our annual Veterans Day Ceremony. And then, uh, just another reminder that on Saturday, December 14th, uh, starting promptly at 5:45, we will start our annual Parade of Lights, uh, parade coming down Palm Drive from Mission Lakes. It will end right here at City Hall, uh, where we will immediately follow with our festivities, including Rides, Santa, uh, everything that our community has grown accustomed to. Uh, so lots of fun upcoming, upcoming events. I also want to give an update to the community on the hub. Um, as Mr. Mowen, uh, mentioned, there's been, we're in a transition period over there, so effective October 1st, uh, we have changed operators. So that facility is now being operated on an interim basis, uh, until the full count, uh, contract comes to council in November, uh, by SWAG. Um, and, uh, so they're in an interim transition period. That, uh, facility is transitioning from a overnight emergency shelter to a 90-day, uh, facility. Um, that full contract will come to council, but right now, we are in a transition period where folks that have been, um, staying for quite a while there, uh, are transitioning into more stable situations. Um, SWAG will absolutely, um, assist folks, uh, but it is not just a, a facility that can be, um, walked in and out of at any given time any longer. There needed to be some stronger security measures put into place, so when folks are, um, trying to access the facility, they need to ring the bell, um, at the front gate, and, uh, and they will have to go through some security protocols to, to gain access there. And that's for the safety of our unhoused community and the staff there. So anybody, uh, that may have questions can reach out to me directly. Um, I am happy to answer any questions, and like I said, that full contract will come back to council, um, in November for consideration. And that concludes our updates.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go to councilmember comments. I think I started that way, so I'll start this way this time. Mr. Betts?
I started with me last time.
I started with you last time. Mr. Nunez?
Oh, I'm good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Pi?
No comment.
Mr. Gardner?
I don't even have time to get my iPad open out there, so, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. No, noteworthy meetings since our last council meeting, I have a couple of announcements, though. The Club de Mujeres, or the Latino Women's Club, is hosting a Fiesta Latina, uh, event in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month and to raise funds for the students at Desert Springs Middle School. That'll be this Friday at Desert Springs Middle School, 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Absolutely free, celebration of Latino culture, food, music, and fun. And again, it's free, so, uh, there's something for Friday night. And- And coming up on Saturday, the 19th, yours truly, again, one of the tour guides of a bus tour of the proposed Chuck Waller National Monument. It's hosted by Pride Outside and Friends of the Desert Mountains. Another free event, bus leaves from Cathedral City at 2:00, comes back at 7:00. There will be drag queens, warning. So that means a lot of fun. Won't be in drag myself, you don't wanna see that. If you want more info or to register, you can check out my Facebook page, and it's got a link for all of the details. You can also check out the Facebook page for Diversity DHS, it's posted over there, too. That's all I've got.
Mr. Betts?
Thank you. I'll thank the police department for putting on the coffee with a cop at the Starbucks. That was nice to get served by our officers. Good job on the cup of coffee. Got a question for staff on Pearson Boulevard as it approaches Little Morongo. It's been rough, to say the least, getting a lot of calls from residents. And the, and I understand we're working on a longer fix, so that, you know, maybe some reluctance to put too much money into it, but it's always the question of, okay, if it's gonna take two years to put everything, get everything moving to, to the upgrades that we're planning for that road, and the road that's there now is too rough to endure for two years, what can we do? And I know that the county has done what I call the chip seal out on Indian, which is pretty cost-effective, but we may be able to do a grind and overlay, and I'm getting into, I'm getting above my pay grade here, because I see the engineer over there jotting stuff down. But I'd like to see, you know, just express here that I think we need to take a look at smoothing up that road, and while you're at it, you might take a look at Little Morongo as it approaches Two Bunch Palm.
Mr. Betts, this isn't the time to ask staff questions. This is a time to give a report to the community. If you have specific questions, you should do that in advance, so they can answer those and give them in their report. If you got a question, a quick question, please ask it. If not, this is a time to give a report on your, your duties over the last two weeks.
Okay, so just to reply to you quickly, this isn't a conversation that I haven't had with staff.
And ask the question, so it doesn't start an item, because now we're all gonna be curious and wanna ask questions, and we can't do that. The public knows that.
Well, I'm just taking quick note, and we're now extending this item into a conversation that I wasn't intending.
Well, as the chair of the meeting, I'm asking you to ask this question or give a report on your committees over the last two weeks. Please do one or the other.
Okay, so I'm just following what's been normal protocol around here for a long time.
This is not normal protocol. You've been asked not to do this multiple times.
Okay, so every, Scott, every, I just wanna make it clear. Every time I ask staff a question, I've already asked it to them in advance.
Stop giving a whole dissertation about your question. Ask the question.
I take great care to make sure that they have every opportunity to review and provide an answer.
We're all concerned about the road, too. Ask your question or give a report to the community. Or we'll move on.
My question is for the benefit of residents who have contacted me about this to try and get them an answer.
Again, stop politicking up here and ask your question.
All right, I'm not politicking.
You are too. Now, please ask your question to staff or give a report on your last two weeks.
Okay, so my question to staff on this is, is it possible that we can get something done to remedy that road ahead of any major repair?
Staff will look at it. I mean, other than the filling in the potholes, you know, staff will report back to the council, will look at and report.
Okay, I'd love to see that get on an agenda here in the council, so that we could have a discussion on that. It's on everybody's minds. Another question that's come up from the residents is, when we do a CFD in a community, there's expenses that are supposed to be tied to that, you know, infrastructure is supposed to be tied to that CFD. I mean, that's what it pays for, the community facilities.
Mr. Betts, are your questions going to be asked to staff tonight?
I really appreciate it if I wouldn't be interrupted by the mayor.
Well, as the chair of the meeting, this is a specific item, which is comments and council member reports. This isn't questioning of staff of issues within the community. So please give a report. If you have questions, please give those to staff in advance, so everyone can have those and get the answers to them. So if we need to agendize something, we will.
To repeat, staff has always had my questions in advance. I don't surprise them here.
Then please get to your report.
So anyhow, my question is, do we do an audit of the CFD to make sure that what it was supposed to pay for has actually been put in place?
Yeah, that's one of the due diligence audits that the, the auditors will look at, is the special funds.
And we have an audit coming up soon?
Yes, for this fiscal '20, where are we at? We just finished fiscal '24.
I'm talking about a housing development CFD, not one of our special funds, so, okay. All right, so that's good, so that'll be included, all right. I attended the Sunline Hydrogen Fueling Station ribbon cutting, and I'm gonna take just a little bit of time here. It was a very significant event. Sunline has 32 hydrogen fuel cell buses running every day, and they do not put out any pollution whatsoever. The only thing that comes out the tailpipe is water. Now, since 2008, Sunline Transit's been operating hydrogen-powered vehicles. It started out with one and then two. And what's been special about Sunline and this effort is that they are now recognized around the world, that's not an exaggeration, as leading in hydrogen fuel cell technology. Basically, a bus can be powered by battery electric, and that was the thinking. But now, through the work that Sunline is doing, everything from semi-tractor trailers, anything that has to go long haul or a bus route, is now moving towards hydrogen fuel cell power. And I'm not a scientist that understands it exactly, but Congressman Dr. Ruiz was at the event, and he put it very well. He said that, you know, "We've got problems with our air quality here in the desert, and there is now an opportunity for a very important transportation corridor to be opened up from Los Angeles to Phoenix, so that all these diesel trucks running down the road, and even though they're cleaner these days, are still putting out a lot of pollution, and it's impacting our air every day." We now have a fueling station at Sunline that will accommodate these vehicles. So as the move goes along to transition to 100% clean energy for long-haul transportation, which everybody seemed was like impossible, it's now coming to fruition at Sunline. So it was a very good event, I was really happy to be there. The fueling station costs $9.1 million. You think, wow, it's huge. But keep in mind that Sunline has been the pilot program, really, for the nation and much of the world in putting this stuff together. So I've been real proud to serve down there, and it's just, I don't give too many reports on Sunline, but I thought this was worthy of it, because it was really a very special event. And Mr. Mayor, since it'll please you, I'm done.
Thank you. I just have one quick report. I attended Riverside County Transportation, nothing pertaining directly to Desert Hot Springs, but those of you who travel on the West End, this has been a long, talked-about project, the Mid-County Parkway, which is another roadway that'll go from the Hemet-San Jacinto area all the way to the west. And the imminent domain of some properties were talked about and done in a public hearing. This is a very large project, very costly, but it's underway, and starting to purchase right away and other means. Highway 60 at Portero, so if you're getting off at Highway 60 at the split there, you'll know that, you'll notice the Amazon plant, or warehouse there. There's an overpass that they had built, and there needs to be on and off ramps eventually. And there wasn't, they couldn't purchase the properties at the time, so it had to go through an imminent domain, and that is taking place now for the future of, often, on ramps. And then, there's, there was a large loan, which is called the TFILO Loan, Transportation Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act Loan, that Riverside County Transportation had acquired years ago to help with the express lanes on I-15. And that loan, there's a plan by the finance director to pay that off. Nothing real, real, you know, sexy to Desert Hot Springs there, but at least it's some progress in the right, right way. And that's all the committees I had over the last two weeks. That's all I'm gonna report on at this time. So I'm gonna move to the agenda, and our first item is with our administrative calendar, and it's item number two. It's the Animal Hospital Veterinarian Operation. Ms. Welsch?
Thank you again. Good evening, mayor, city council. Just by way of background, on November 7th, 2023, the city of Desert Hot Springs acquired the animal hospital located at 13700 Palm Drive, along with the animal sanctuary located on North Indian Canyon Drive from the Humane Society of the Desert. On November 30th of 2023, the city released a RFI, a Request for Interest for Veterinary Services, to identify a suitable partner to provide high-quality and affordable veterinary services at the hospital for the community and the city's animal care and control division. On March 24th, 19th, 2024, the city council authorized the city manager to negotiate and execute all agreements consistent with the conditions that were set forth in that staff report with animal Samaritans for the transfer of ownership and operations of the animal hospital. In August of 2024, the city manager notified the city council that unfortunately, the city had been unsuccessful in reaching terms that were agreeable to the city with animal Samaritans. In September of 2024, the city released another RFI for veterinary services, again, to find a suitable partner to operate there. The city, since then, has been also proactively sending the RFI to any and all animal hospitals and veterinary care centers throughout Southern California, in an attempt, again, to get a suitable operator. Since then, the city has been engaging with Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which operates the city of Palm Springs Animal Shelter and the Desert Wildlife Center. The Palm Springs Animal Shelter is an open admissions municipal shelter, serving the city of Palm Springs and providing programs for animals, pets, and pet owners across the Coachella Valley. The Desert Wildlife Center, located in Indio, will serve as a safe refuge for sick, injured, and orphaned wildlife needing medical treatment and rehabilitation. Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter has spent time with staff over the last several weeks discussing the city's goals and needs for the successful operation of the animal hospital, and have expressed a strong desire to proceed with negotiations to provide full-service, affordable veterinary services at the animal hospital. These initial services would include, but are not limited to, pet wellness exams, dental cleanings and care, spay and neuter services, vaccines, and microchipping. They also plan to provide community trap-neuter and return services of stray, unsocialized cats. These services would include financial aid availability to reduce the cost of veterinary services for qualifying low-income residents of Desert Hot Springs and surrounding communities. So tonight, the recommendation from staff is to authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement with the Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter to provide veterinary services at the animal hospital, excuse me, located at 13700 Palm Drive. This agreement would be brought back before the city council at a future meeting for review and consideration. That concludes my staff report. Happy to answer any questions. We also have representatives from Friends of the Animal, Palm Springs Animal Shelter to answer questions as well.
Great. We're gonna take public comments first, and then we'll get into the item itself. I do have one public comment from Dirk Voss. Anyone else that would like to make a public comment, you do not have to fill out a blue card, you can come up after Dirk's three minutes.
There we go. All right. Greetings, good evening. Name is Dirk Voss, resident of Desert Hot Springs, and this is a great, great item here. And, you know, when I saw this, sometimes patience is a virtue, or being penny-wise, pound-for-ear, sometimes it's not a direction where we want to go. And the, the great thing about it is, is with this group, Friends of Palm Springs Shelter, I remember when they started, when they built the, the shelter itself over there, and how, what it's become today. And this is such an amazing project possibility that we could have with them. And I would really urge you to support this and do this, not only just because that we need it, but they're a great partnership. They're just one of the best examples that I can say in all of Southern California that I know of, that is a shining example, that represents well. And it also begins engaging more regional interactiveness with other cities on the other side of the freeway, which I think is important for, for the city of Desert Hot Springs. So I would urge that, you know, the patience that we had, maybe even the frustrations, they all went to a good cause in a sense of, we jumped over them, and now we got this, which is, I, I believe is a much, much better opportunity than what we had previously, and in agreement that, that didn't work. And I think they're great people, and I would really welcome in our town, and I appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Yes, ma'am? Please come forward, state your name, your three minutes will begin.
Hi, my name is Sandra Munoz. I'm a homeless resident, or transient, I guess I'd say, in Desert Hot Springs. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. I apologize for being late, there's been a little bit of...
Are you making a public comment on the animal hospital?
Is it on the animal hospital? If it's only the animal hospital, I say go with Palm Springs.
And then, there's general public comments at the end of the meeting, if you wanted to make general comments.
Great, I'll do that. But Palm Springs Animal Control, my first cat that I got when I first got here about five years ago, I couldn't get there in time. They actually sent a volunteer with ice water to come pick me up, because I got off at the wrong bus stop. They covered all the vaccinations for my animal, they spayed her, no, no, actually, animal Samaritans did, and I'm real disappointed in animal Samaritans. When I worked animal control prior to becoming homeless, I dealt with, actually, Esther from animal control, she kind of founded the thing. She is still alive and just still trapping cats and spaying and neutering them. I looked at the facility, the dumps that they were in, and what they have now. I wish we could do that for this facility here, maybe one day we'll be able to. Stay with Palm, yeah. Animal Samaritans got a little bit too big for the britches, like some people have. When I worked there, there was a, the vice president of animal Samaritans, animal Samaritans had no money, and he was paying it out of his, he got like a trust fund or something like that. He paid the employees' salary. So when I, when I did have my cat Amulet spayed, you know, it used to cost like 20 bucks, it was like almost $300. You know, I do trust veterinarians there. Dr. Mills, I believe, is still working there. I was his vet tech for over 10 years, his personal friend of mine. I was there at the birth of his son, so, you know, I'm sorry to see, you know, once you start getting bigger, then you get that ego thing going, and you lose all what you're all about. That's why animal action lead, Palm Springs Animal Control and everything. Back then, animal Samaritans was getting greed. Greed is not gonna work in this time zone, or this 2024, especially not October and November, because, you know, like to say, I'd like to not stay for the meeting, but as per, if I could do one comment, I think a higher priority on a road would be the safety light down at the library, Mr. Russ. Okay?
Thank you very much. Have a great night. Any other public comments on the animal hospital? Yes, sir?
So this last young lady makes me think of the fact that there are so many homeless with animals out there, we can't ignore that. And I think whoever does eventually come in there and operate the veterinary clinic, there should be consideration for that. I mean, no matter what we all think about homeless and on our streets and such, they also have animals, and those animals have to be taken care of periodically. I volunteer at Food Now, and we see people coming there all the time with their animals, and we're trying to help them like everyone else with dog food and cat food and such. So I think Friends of Palm Springs, whoever does come in, should look at that as a possibility to help those animals that are on our streets. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any other public comments? All right, we'll close, close public comments, and did you gentlemen have anything you'd like to add? Maybe introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Dan Rossi. I'm the executive director of the Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. We are the nonprofit that has the contract that runs the municipal animal shelter. And as you all know, we're also in the midst of opening up the Desert Hot Springs facility for wildlife as well. So we're very excited about the opportunity to negotiate the opening of the Desert Hot Springs Animal Facility. This is something that we've really been wanting to do as a board, as an organization, to grow our services to low-income people. It's the perfect place to be able to do that as well, so we're very excited about the opportunity. We do low-cost vaccinations in clinics and spay-neuter out of our current facility. We've just outgrown that to be able to offer that valley-wide, so this will give us more of that opportunity as well. Personally, I ran a very large system back east, where we had two hospitals that offered low-cost vaccinations, wellness, spay-neuter of the animals in that, and my personal pledge is to do that and bring that here.
Thank you, Dan. There might be some questions for you.
Questions?
We'll...
I have a quick question.
Yeah, what is here?
Are you guys open up to, open to the idea of bringing in interns, volunteers, and whatnot?
Yes, very much so. That's how we're able to offer low-cost services, is by utilizing volunteers and interns and things like that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Do you have anything? Go with Gary and then Mr. Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dan. I have been a huge fan of Friends of Palm Springs Animal Shelter since I've been in the desert. I loved, I got the chance to go to the grand opening of the Wildlife Center. It was very windy. It was very windy, but it still was a great day out there, and that'll be another amazing facility. And I love the fact that you are partnering with us. This is a fantastic model, what you have created in Palm Springs with your volunteer network, with your reach outreach. I know that our animal control facility partners with you on some of our adoptable pets. We have adoption events. We take things over there. So to have you even coordinate even more, I think it's fantastic. It's been such a shame that that hospital has been sitting there idle for five years. But as you know of going through there, you walk in there and it's, they closed the door five years ago, and the equipment is still only a year old, even though it's six years from now because it's still brand new. So I'm really excited to have that. My dog Luna, who everybody knows I adore and take with her everywhere, and if I could bring her here, she would be with me right now. Probably vote aye on this, too, if you'd mark it. But my vet, Dr. Coons, is on your board, and he and I have had long discussions about this because he sits next to me on the mosquito vector control board. And so I'm really excited. I know he's very excited about it, and I can't wait to see you guys here.
Great. We're looking forward to the negotiation. And again, a city council that hires a Pittsburgh guy, I trust and want to work with. So we look forward to this process. Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Betts?
Bart, you have anything to add? Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Thanks. So now, do you provide veterinary services down in Palm Springs?
So what we currently provide there is our vaccination clinic, which is every Thursday afternoon. We also do public, on a very small scale, spay and neuter services at this point in time.
So if you get a dog that comes in that needs some type of medical attention, like maybe a teeth extraction or something, what do you, what do you do?
So again, we would never turn any animal away that comes to our door. So it depends on the situation and what's going on with that animal. It just might be that we stabilize it and get it ready to go over to VCA or something like that. But we, we always take care of any animal that comes to us, no matter what the need is, no matter if somebody has no money in their pockets or are very wealthy.
Okay, but if it comes in with an injury or something like that, you've got to go find a vet or an animal hospital to take it to, right?
It depends on the exact situation and what's going on with it. Often, our vets on staff there can take care of many situations. Some of them might be too extreme where we don't have the right equipment or the space to be able to deal with that situation. And then we work with VCA most of the time and Dr. Coons in those situations.
I don't know the exact definitions, but, you know, a veterinarian will do so much onsite, and then at some point in time, animals go to an animal hospital, correct?
Correct, yes.
And you're not envisioning that this facility would be an animal hospital?
Given the design and the size of it, I don't, I don't see this as actually being a full-time emergency facility down the line. Can we do some urgent care there? Certainly. One of our goals also is this is not going to be a nine-to-five operation. We want to be open for when people who work can actually access it as well.
And so it basically follows the same model as for all of us. If you go to the, you know, general practitioner, he says, go here, and then you go on. Everybody's got a facility where they go to. But I'm just trying to find out, you know, we had, so be, all right, so for veterinary services, is that what you're planning to bring in? Have a full-time vet on staff?
Yes, we'll have a full-time vet there. We'll probably have, again, this is very early in this situation. We currently have two full-time vets that work for us. We'll probably add a third down the line, probably a fourth as well. But we envision a full-time vet to be there, a vet tech to admin people that run the front desk and two medical assistants as well. So six staff during a day or shift.
All right, so I just want to walk through the situation. I'm trying to understand what the facility is envisioned to be. So my dog, for some reason, gets hurt. I don't know whatever happened. Another dog bit it. They got in a fight, whatever, it's hurt. And so I take it down to you, and you'll bandage it up, give it all the care it needs to, that, that's what, that's what happens there?
So that will be a basic wellness type of situation. Now, again, if your dog.
Wellness means checking them up, make sure they're okay. I'm talking about patching them back together. Maybe it's been hit by a car or something like that.
Again, it depends on the situation and the scale of that. If your dog was hit by a car and needed an amputation, that is probably something we could not specifically do at that facility.
So I go down there, seeing animal hospital on the building, and my dog's been hit by a car, needs an amputation or whatever it is. So what's going to happen? You're going to, you're going to take them in?
So we're going to stabilize it. We're going to stabilize it and help that person find the right place to bring it to.
Because they'll have to go to one of the other veterinary facilities like Banning or wherever else.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Similar to an emergency room, right? So you triage, and some emergency rooms can handle heart attacks and some can't. So sometimes you've got to package them up, send them where they need to go for specialty services. But for the most part, you're looking to be a veterinarian clinic that people can bring their animals to and get checkups and certain situations.
Get checkups, vaccination, wellness. We also want to probably out of the gate do humane euthanases for the public as well because that's so desperately needed in our communities at low cost.
To Mr. Betts's point, maybe the change, the name will be changed anyways eventually and won't be known as a hospital, but it'll be known as a veterinarian care center.
Clinic care center, something like that. Exactly. We are also in the process of changing the name of Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. It really doesn't exactly work for us anymore as we expand into new areas and do different things.
Well, I know that you have a lot of support out of Desert Hot Springs. I think this is a great partnership. The city manager and I were sitting at a table, I think Mr. Gardner was there, I think all the council was there, but we were, we were sitting at a table at the all mayor's luncheon, all mayor's and tribal luncheon. I'm going to make sure I get the whole title. And we heard your, your report on the purchasing of the wildlife sanctuary, sanctuary or wildlife?
Rehab center.
Rehab center. And we thought, wow, what a great partnership this could become. And I know he reached out right away and, and with some encouragement from a couple of us. It just, when you guys took a tour, you brought in some of your board members, and they discussed that this is just kind of perfect timing because of what your outreach and what your, what your goals are for, set for the future and what you want and to really give back to the community, and this is an opportunity. So I have all confidence in our city manager that he's going to be able to negotiate a deal with you, and I have all confidence that you guys are excited to come in and do this for us. And I'm excited to get this thing open because we've been promising it for so long and had so many opportunities. And, man, it's just, we got setback so many times that this is really a need in our community. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
We'll have our mayor do the first dog grooming when it's time to do.
Don't want me to dog grooming now. See my hair? It's, one more question? For, for staff or for the individual? All right, we're going to, thank you for now, and we'll bring you back up if you have any questions. Anything to add, staff, on this before we get to deliberation? All right, Ms. Betts?
Yeah, so the, you know, we're talking the difference between a veterinarian or an animal hospital, and tried to establish that definition. Something really serious, they got to go off to some facility where they can actually care for them. If I go up to Banning, and they tell me the dog needs a teeth extraction, then I'm able to get that done there. And so I just, I want to make sure that, you know, the public's expectation is, is that we're going to have veterinary services here, like somebody who's taking their dog up to Banning or wherever else. I always went to Banning. I guess up in Yonka Valley has a couple of good places also, that that's what this is going to be. I know the expectation has been that it'd be an animal hospital. I know when I put forth a proposal back in 2019 to have a veterinarian hospital over at Mission Lakes Marketplace, you know, the question was put to me, and I think rightly so by Mr. Gardner, well, is that going to be an animal hospital or just a veterinary clinic? And, you know, my understanding was that was going to be an animal hospital. So now, are we going to remove the word "hospital" from the building? And all I'm getting at is I want to try and find out what it is this facility is going to be. I was really excited when we heard animal Samaritans coming in because they're a full-on vet, and that was coming in at a great deal. And unfortunately, they backed out, and you can't blame staff for trying. It was good effort, just didn't work out. But, so I would like to see, right here, when I see the scope of services in the, in the staff report, it says, you know, included but not limited to pet wellness exams. Okay, that's good. Go down, make sure my dog's okay. Dental cleanings and care, but that's not an extraction. Spay and neuter services, that's good. Vaccines and microchipping. But I, you know, and I understand, I see the, but not limited to, but I would like to see what it is that staff is going to come back to us with. Are you going to go for a full veterinarian? Or is this going to be a wellness center? Or is this going to be an animal hospital?
So, so the idea is, of course, that there would be full veterinary services at this, at this location. The name may change from animal hospital to, to whatever it ends up being. So we're in the very, very early stages of negotiations with these folks. I do want to make it clear with animal Samaritans, the intention was never for this to operate, for the facility to operate 24/7. Those weren't even the services that were designated by animal Samaritans. So it was going to be nine-to-five type of operation. So consistent with what we've always talked about, operating there is the goal. We're in the very early stages of these conversations, and of course, the full contract would come forward. So we understand what the goal and vision is of the council. We've been working on this for a number of years. And so understanding that, that is the, the type of thought process that's going to be in our brain when we continue to negotiate this agreement.
Okay. And I wasn't pressing for 24/7. I know that's a tall order. I don't even think I can call up Banning Animal Hospital. I just keep picking them because that's where I always took Fluffy. The, but I don't think, even they were 24/7. Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Banning and the VCA in Indio, I think, are the two 24/7.
Wow, okay. Well, I know it's tough to get in there because everything's so overcrowded. And then the, obviously, you're going to come back with whatever costs there would be to the city on that, and I don't need that now. I'm just asking you to, when you bring this back, and my understanding is this vote has just authorized you to go start talking to people. This is not a done deal. This is not the contract coming back. And so I'm just putting in my request as a council member based on what I hear the public needing, is that to make sure that the expectation is somewhere to take my dog when it's hurt is there. And that's the concern I would have and request that I'd make. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gardner?
No, I, this is, like you said, a long time coming. I'm excited for this. I can't think of a better organization to do this. So I'm happy to make a motion that we recommend the, we authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement with Friends of Palm Springs Animal Shelter and bring it back to us. I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
There is a motion to second. Any, any further comments on this side?
Will that include coming back to us with a list of the scope of services?
It'll be part of the, it'll be part of the agreement, that scope of services.
A specific list of the services that are provided?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
I just want to make a final comment before we vote. I'm thrilled. I understand your vision. I understand exactly what you want to do, and I, I see you growing and continuing to grow and continuing to offering services and someday maybe be in that 24-hour service. I just, I hear it in your voices. I'm not saying you're doing that. I'm just saying I can hear your passion and from your board members. Thank you for everything you guys are doing. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, we're going to move to item number three on the administrative calendar. This is the corporate yard park, name our park contest. Mr. Porras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The corporate yard park project, give a little brief history and background. This project has been, been worked on for years. So here's a little flashback. 2013 was the park's master plan, where the needs analysis stated that the city was efficient in baseball fields, softball fields, youth football fields, outdoor basketball courts, and other, many other categories. In 2017, city council approved having a new park at the sites, at the city's site of the city's corporate yard and surrounding area, which is about 10 acres. In 2019, the city council awarded the architectural design contract for corporate yard park to Herman Design Group. Herman Design Group started the design and the environmental documents, and in 2020, the planning commission adopted and certified the initial study and mitigated net declaration for the park, making it ready for either federal or state funding. In 2021, city council approved the first amendment to move the design contract into the completion of construction drawings and specifications to have the project as a shovel-ready project so we can be more competitive when applying for grants. In 2023, the city applied and was awarded a $5 million grant for the actual construction of the park, which brings us to tonight where we have, we are in the last plan check of the park project itself. We expect to release the request proposals for construction this winter and begin construction in 2025. Some park features and amenities, the installation of a new football field. The initial idea was youth football, junior all-American football. We'll be able to utilize this field for practices and games. Currently, we have Mission Springs Park that is used by junior all-American football and AYSO during the exact same season of the year. Therefore, practices are actually done at various locations, at Warman Park, at the school across, and even at, at different parks in, in the city. So this will help relieve the overcrowdedness between junior all-American and AYSO football leagues. The park also featured installation of a new baseball field in which literally we'll be, we utilize this field for playing the higher divisions and for tournaments. Currently, we have two fields at Warman Park, but not a larger field. So we currently use the high school field for the higher divisions and for some tournaments. There is some common areas that include some shade structure seedings. There's restrooms, a snack bar, equipment, storage rooms. There's a playground equipment for five to 12-year-olds, and there is Moscow lighting with the, with the new Moscow Vision that will be able to broadcast the games that are being played in the fields. The park layout is shown here. It's in between Hacienda and Flora, and it's east of Choya. The northwest corner will remain the corporate yard. It will be the animal care and control center will remain as well. It'll just be shifted towards the corner where currently it's vacant. The baseball field will be in the northeast corner, and then the football field will be in the southeast corner with the parking on the north, I'm sorry, in the southwest corner. This layout was reviewed in many different forms, in many different ways, so we can accommodate the correct baseball fields. We'd accommodate the largest football field we can, and this was the ultimate layout that was, that was planned by our consultants. Here's a rendering of what the football field and the baseball field will look. It's very, very straightforward. It's just a football field and a baseball field on one side. We do have an entry drop-off area. We took in the design portion, similar to Mission Springs Park, where you have the soccer balls as ballers. This one will have baseballs and footballs as ballards. We will have some shade structures, trees for seating area in between both fields so you'll be able to watch both games at the same time. This is the north half of the park. The project will consist of installing fencing and block walls around the entire perimeter, upgrading and completing those streets, doing landscaping all the way through, having the baseball field obviously flat, and then having a raised area in the outfield where you'll be able to sit down and watch the games with some trees under there as well. There is a 50-foot fence that will be protecting the housing development that is to the east of the baseball field for any home runs that are out of the, out of the field. This is the south portion of the park. This one shows the main entryway with that circle on the left side, and then it has a parking area, retention basin. And then as soon as you enter, you have the snack bar, restrooms, a little picnic area with a playground structure next to it. And then you walk through the concrete area, you have a football field on the right and a baseball field on the left, and a storage area in the back for both youth organizations to utilize for storing their equipment. So park features, we will have wrought iron gates or wrought iron fencing and decorative block wall, similar to the city hall block wall that we have out here. There will be chainings, fence backstop, and again, there will be a 50-foot-high fencing protecting the home runs against the residential development next to the park. The, the park itself will have a restroom, snack bar, and a storage facility, and will have a playground structure that will be for five to 12-year-olds. There will be a canopy, a cantilever canopy for the seating of the football field and a canopy for the seating of the picnic area next to the, next to the snack bar. Which takes us to our sign, that is the design of the corporate yard park. Originally, it's been called the corporate yard park just because it sits next to the corporate yard park. It is not the intention to remain in the corporate yard park, so we created a name art park contest in which any new member of the public can submit a proposed park name. It is now open from now until December 31st, so the end of this year. It is through our city website. You just click on it very easily. You submit your name, submit what you think the park name should be and just hit enter. We're going to collect all of those entries and we are recommending a park naming committee to be established with two city council members for those two city council members to review all the names and make a formal recommendation back to city council during the January 24th city council meeting. That concludes my staff report. The recommendation again is to appoint two members of the city council to a park naming subcommittee for review of park name submissions. We also have our architects here, Herman Design. I just want to send a shout out to them. They've been great with this project, especially since we've been designing it for seven years, six years. And we've been through so many different funding issues, but they've been, they've been great on this. So if there's any design questions or you're answering any specific questions, but again, thank you for all their help.
Pretty excited about this. I'm going to take public comments, but just for general discussion, I would like to propose that council member Gardner and council member Mayor Potempi be the two that we discuss as the park naming committee for obvious reasons. I'll open up for public comments at this time. If anybody have any public comments. See nobody coming forth or close public comments? Mr. Gardner?
Just one quick question, Danny. The grant on this one, if I recall, when we accepted the funding on that grant, there was a timeline that was attached to it. Am I mistaken?
Yes, it's, we had to build it by the, I believe, the, I believe it's the end of 2026, so.
So it has to be completed by the end of 2026.
Construction, yes. And it's Clean California was the grant, Clean California Grant.
This park is in my neighborhood. It's in my district and my neighbors and, and people that live around that area are very excited about having this there and they're anxiously awaiting it. So if I can tell them it'll be done by the end of 26th at the latest, then, then that's a good thing. So that's all I've got. Thanks.
Well, what's a realistic construction? Is it awarded in January?
It should be done by the summer of 2026, about 18 months, 12 to 18 months.
Danny, just the only question I have, Mr. Mayor, is, is this going to be significant parking for?
So we, we did take that into account. We currently have, if you see our Mission Springs Park, if you see that count, during events, it gets, it obviously gets filled, but during the rest of them, it's not. So there should be enough parking here. We did do a parking calculation and so forth for the site design as well.
Okay, so as we move, as we grow and Hacienda gets widened out, is Hacienda going to become a problem with the widening and the parking?
So Hacienda, the design for the street improvements is a separate project, but it does connect to this park. So it will have connectivity from the park all the way to, actually goes to Palm and then it'll go to the end of the street. So yeah, we did take, take that into account where there will be street parking available if for overflow.
Can we potentially use the city property that's in the corner for temporarily parking if possible?
So the city property would be the city's corporate yard. We're already shifting that completely over. So right now, we have about three acres of that are for the corporate yard. We are reducing that to a little bit less. I'm sorry, right now, we have about six acres, reducing it to about three acres. So it'll be a little tight there to use as overflow. But there is an area to the north that we didn't account for as a park, so that would be kind of our overflow from there.
Okay. Maybe we can.
Point, excuse me, point of order. This is about naming, the park contest is not about the plans, not yet.
Right. Well, I think it was partly an update on where the project is and naming of the park. I thought that was the intent of the item. I'm just asking the city manager.
Yeah, the two items, the action item tonight was, the action item tonight was, you know, looking for the two members, but it was a receive and file as it relates to the, the layout of the park. So any comments are appreciated.
So I think it'd be okay to take comments on the design and what they're moving forward? You don't agree?
No, but I'll go with the council.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Pi. That's it for now. Thank you.
Mr. Fugatz?
The, well, geez, it was 2017 when this, I remember this was here, you were in front of us. I believe that was you, right? And, you know, you think, how long do these things take to get done? And it's just a lot of effort and, and it wasn't the funding came through on this until recently. So thanks for the job staff does. I always explain to the public that, you know, hey, this takes a while to get this stuff done and nobody's just sitting around. The actual construction is probably the least difficult part of it all. We had talked back in 2017 about the streets surrounding the park and that, you know, we always saw these problems with speeders and is there something that we can incorporate into the design of the park? And I thought I got agreement back in 2017 when we talked about it, that, you know, something would do traffic calming of something and not triangles, please, but maybe speed humps. And ones designed like are at West near Wenzloff, those work really, really well to slow traffic down, but I would hope that that could be worked into the design so that, you know, if there isn't enough parking, as Roger brought up, that, and people are parking on the street for a larger event or something, that they don't have to worry about cars speeding up and I'd like to make the streets part of the park. So that, hopefully that is still in the works. Beautiful design that you came up with. It's just absolutely fantastic. There's going to be lighting, okay? And what else do they have here? You sure 50 foot's tall enough? I played Little League, you know, and I've hit a lot of home runs over that tall backstop. Is 50 foot tall enough?
Yes, 260 feet away.
Okay, I guess, well, it's no problem for me, but okay, I guess we'll add to it if we have to, right? So, okay, good. All right, well, I just want to thank staff for the continued diligence on this and was the council a long time ago, set this in motion, sorely needed. We've got Karen Park out there, you know, just without that, you know, if we had had that, there wouldn't be such a desperate need for this, but over the years, we've just let the developer off on that one and so I guess we'll start working in that direction next. But anyhow, it's just so needed to see this part and the designs are just beautiful. Thank you. You did a fabulous job.
All right, just some quick comments. Just to correct the record for future, it's not junior all-American football anymore. They yell at me all the time about this because I always say junior all-American. It's Desert Hot Springs Eagles Youth Football. So we got that straight. So as soon as some of these volunteers see that and they're, they're going to call me up and say, can you stop? But then I heard they might go back to junior all-American. So who knows? Either, right now, they're Desert Hot Springs Eagles Youth Football. So I'm thrilled about this. Everybody knows my history with Little League and when youth football started in the community, it was always this pull and take with AYSO and AYSO continues to expand. This will give them more space at Mission Springs and give the football, youth football team a field to play on that they don't have to spend. I think they're spending close to $20,000 a year in renting the high school field for use of that. So it's, it's a lot of money and so they can go back into the program and they can expand their programs. There was a little bit of a delay because of lighting. They, you had to go back and redesign that, correct?
Yeah, part of the Clean California Grant, we had to incorporate specific design features that originally were not part of the actual design scope of work. So we worked with Herman and said, one of them was a solar lighting. So we tried to incorporate parking lot to be solar lighting. We had to do the analysis and determine that the candles weren't meeting our standards. So we had to remove them again. So we started to do the analysis for the grant so it can qualify, which, which bought back a few, a few, a few days. We are going to incorporate some solar lighting, but it's mostly going to be just on walkway parking, not, not parking lot lighting.
Awesome. Great design. Can't wait for us to get to construction and see that park come to fruition. So my recommendation is, my motion is to appoint Mayor Potempi and Councilmember Gardner to the naming committee. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, our last item on the administrative calendar is Proposition 36, the Homeless Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act. Mr. Lucino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item in front of you this evening is to consider the approval of a resolution supporting ballot measure Prop, Proposition 36, the Homeless Drug Addiction and Theft Relief Act. Just by way of some background, Prop 36, the definition of which, if passed, would target reforms to Proposition 47 that was passed in 2014. And even prior to that, there was the prison realignment. Those two pieces of legislation have, you know, put a strain on communities enforcing order within our communities. Cal Cities, League of California Cities, within the staff report, and I'll touch upon that in a second, has put together a comparison of the impacts, positive impacts to Prop 47 versus Prop 36. The Police Chiefs Association, along with DA Association, District Attorneys Association and Cal Cities are endorsing this proposition. Prop passed in 2014 is mentioned, Prop 47, among other things, classified certain crimes as misdemeanors instead of felonies, which is putting a burden on communities and police departments. Prop 47, although had good intentions, it had unintended consequences over the past decade, including repeat and often organized retail theft and difficulty convincing people to seek drug and mental health treatment. This measure will define fentanyl as a hard drug, hold individuals convicted of trafficking fentanyl accountable and grant judges greater discretion in sentencing drug traffickers. Fentanyl addition, addiction and deaths have been on the rise, as we all know. So this proposition could be the law that helps to reduce the impacts to our community. And Gerald, if you could pull up that comparison, please. So just to kind of run down through here, in proposition, so the governor, so the council is aware, the governor did and has worked on with some legislators to pass some legislative packages, but Prop 36 is an initiative by, by the people. And some of them that have, just for notations here, you know, it adds the list of crimes, so fentanyl possession with firearm adds to the list of crimes with penalties of two, three and four years of prison. Fentanyl increasing penalties, increases penalties from two to 20 years depending on the amount. Treatment mandated felony creates a new crime for hard drug possession with tiered penalties up to 25 years. So, you know, from a fentanyl perspective, Prop 36 is, again, trying to put some teeth out there to, you know, prevent this addiction within our communities. From a retail theft perspective, you know, aggregation provides that any case involving one or more acts of theft of shoplifting may be aggregated into a single count of charge. And just to explain that, right now, today, and, you know, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but every incident when you steal is an incident, you know? So you steal by way of example, Monday, $950, then Tuesday, you steal another $950. They're two separate. This will aggregate the two, which will exceed it to go into a felony. You know, so that is, you know, one of the big things as it relates to retail theft that was out there. Chief, I don't know if you needed any, any other clarifications there? And just so the council's aware, the men and women on the, on the street, our POA has also recognized this as a, you know, maybe not perfect, you know, fixing Prop 47, but definitely a help to Prop 47. So staff is here to answer any other questions and, thank you.
No, we appreciate that and we don't often take up state issues like this, but this is very important. I felt, as you explained to me when you talked about putting on the agenda, that it did hit homes, especially with our unhoused population out there and what we're going through and trying to get them into rehab and assistance a lot of times. This could help with that, I think, in certain areas. So I wanted the council to be able to discuss and decide whether they wanted to support the resolution or not. I'm going to ask for public comments at this time. Anyone like to make any public comments before we take, we go to deliberation? Yes, sir?
I'm a 45-year resident of Desert Hot Springs. Fentanyl, very serious. I remember when we first started getting fentanyl cases that Rose Martry had to pick up for the coroner. And there was so much scare and so much worry about it. When I'd go to remove a fentanyl case, I had to put on what we called a bunny suit. I had to put on full coveralls, covers on my shoes, double glove my hands, put on a face mask, keep a hat on my head. Fentanyl is very dangerous. Anything this city council can do to reduce fentanyl exposure in our community is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Close public comments right now and I'll go to deliberation. Anyone? Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, you're right. We don't often do these and we get asked to do them a lot and God bless the league and I'm on the executive committee, but they really want, they want us to take a position on everything under the sun. And I think it's wise for us to hold our, our support for only major items and I think this one is a very major one. You look at the smashing grabs, you look at the other things that are covered under this that were, as you said, slipped through the cracks and the unintended consequences of the old Proposition 47. But more importantly, I think, I sense the frustration in our street officers, our police officers association and our chief in having to deal with this stuff. And I know the frustration is out there because they can't make the arrests they want to make, they can't make the prosecutions they want to make. And this will aid in that and I think it'll be a, a, a good thing. And I will say, I have, I've already voted and I've already supported this, my ballot's in the, in the drop box tonight. So I, for one, think this is a great idea and I'm happy to support it.
Spence?
So I'm going to share the sentiment that we don't normally bring issues like this to this council. I think it's been good in the time I've been up here that we've avoided getting into some of that stuff. I'm, I'm recognizing, look at this, you find out who's in favor of this and who's opposed and I'm sure we could have people here if they knew it was on our agenda would be here saying, no, don't vote for those people who are against this proposition, there's people that are for it. But the question's before us, so let's go. You said something about hard drug possession is going to be, is that hard drug possession for sale and profit or is that hard drug possession for use?
You know, I believe both. I mean, chief, yeah, both.
So somebody's addicted, they're using hard drugs and now they're going to go to jail or they're going to go to treatment?
Well, now it's recognized as a hard drug. So that is part of, you know, if you look at the title of the legislation, you know, it, you know, drug addiction. So yeah, that is the goal is to get those who are addicted, now it's a crime, now you have to go to addiction counseling or addiction treatment.
Okay, so, all right. Now if somebody is shoplifting, we can now arrest them and take them down to jail, correct? But the problem is they're let out right away. Does that basically sum it up?
Yeah, it's a misdemeanor. So they, currently, they could be arrested as many times as they do it and it's misdemeanors. Now, if this passes, after the second one, it'd become a felony, not a, not a misdemeanor.
Okay, and you don't, as a local police department, you don't prosecute these, you just perform the function of arresting, making the case for somebody else to prosecute them. And the frustration is, is that you've caught this person so many times stealing and that you've, even if you take them down to jail, which you can do, every time, it's still illegal to shoplift, but it's just as soon as you get down there, they'll probably beat you back to the city before, before the officer gets back, they're probably back here first.
Well, I think the frustration level, more so than even the police officer, is the business owner that sees the same individual continuing to steal from him and at some point, they give up calling us because they know they're being released. This is going to change that and go back to actual teeth to it so that after the second and any other offenses, it becomes felonies.
Okay, but we have to dedicate resources to stopping shoplifting under both scenarios, Prop 36 or otherwise, right? I mean, if the shopkeeper is upset that we're not responding, are we not responding because we don't want to take them to jail or are we not responding because we can't take them to jail?
No, we respond to every time they call. What I think has happened with the major retailers is they stopped calling the police department because they're frustrated that they see the individual still going out there. This will help alleviate that because the person that's in there constantly stealing is going to end up with felonies and they're going to end up in jail.
Okay, I was down at Home Depot and you talked to them and they are just, the workers will just take it right away. This is, you know, if you go down there about 8:30, they're getting ready to come.
Yep.
And they're just leaving with shopping carts full of stuff. And the owner down there, you know, that says, doesn't do any good to call the police. They don't, they're, the police don't even respond anymore because there's, they just, it's so out of hand.
And, and I believe the individuals that are actually stealing are going to know this and so that's going to reduce that portion of it where they know that if this is going to be a second or third time, they're going to go to jail and that will help eliminate some of that.
On a couple of occasions, I've been in the stores. One time I was walking in 7-Eleven and this girl's walking out. She didn't get a bag of stuff. She has an armload of stuff. It's obvious what she was doing. So I kind of directed her back in, the city, the store manager was there and I didn't put myself in any danger. She wasn't going to hurt me. Her boyfriend looked a little, you know, I said, am I okay with you? Yeah. But then the other time I was in at the store and these young kids walked through and they didn't look anything like hardened criminals. They just said, hey, there's no penalty. And they just walked right on through and as I'm sitting there, oh, I picked up on, you know, the clerk watched them walk right out with their cosmetics, whatever else that they wanted. And so we've got to, we've got to deal with this one. All right, I hadn't really, I've said enough, thank you.
Mr. Pi, anything?
Bottom line is this is the right thing to do. It's not exactly the right thing to do, but it gives more teeth. It's not exactly the right thing to do, but it gives more teeth to the police officers, and for that, I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
There's a motion and a second, and I'll make some comments real quick. I think it's an important opportunity, it isn't perfect if you read through it, but it's definitely a step in the right direction, including some language up and actually supporting what is necessary to force individuals to get the help they need, and to support some of these, we just got stories over here of all kinds of incidents that have happened, and hopefully, it'll put more teeth in that in the future, too. I think our police departments and our jail system is obviously overwhelmed, and misdemeanor crimes are going to always be released as quick as possible, if even taken down sometimes to the jails, so this maybe puts enough teeth in it that warns people that they're not gonna get away with as much. So I'm gonna support it also. Any questions, Mr. Neves? Comments? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Last item on the agenda is award professional services agreement, pavement management plan. Mr. Porter, is he gonna give the report?
Yeah, I'll give you a brief update. The city's currently releasing an RFP for the completing the pavement management plan, which is a pavement condition index reading or rating. The consultant goes out and identifies different road segments, and then prescribes a specific rating for the actual road itself. That road rating is then analyzing to what budget the city has, and studies wants, the city needs, whatever that is, and then sets up a needs for the next five years, 10 years, whatever it is, so it maps out an entire plan for pavement. Once you hit a certain rating, roads, like the earlier comment about the actual condition itself, is it worth doing a grind and overlay? Can you do a slurry? Can you do a complete removal, whatever that is? It hits a certain point where it's not even worth even fixing it, sometimes it is. The cost to maintain it, if you miss that mark, would then double, triple, whatever that is. What we did is we released this RFP, we got eight proposals, and this was rated the highest from our evaluators, and one reason it was rated the highest, probably the main reason was because they're using some new technology that we hadn't seen. They're using our laser imaging system with cameras that are downward facing on a special vehicle, and they're gonna drive every road and take 3D images of our roads, analyze all the crackings and different cracks, and then prescribe a specific rating. So the accuracy level is gonna be something that we hadn't seen before, where it would be visual inspection, human inspection, but you go out there and you identify them in a clipboard. So this will be actual digital images that we'll receive at the end with a full complete rating of our entire city, which will then be used to budget our road maintenance program for the next years. So we are recommending to award this contract to this firm, which is, and I just had Applied Research Associates. When we first analyzed it, it was through professional service agreements, so it was the highest rating. We did not look at the costs, and then we opened the actual costs, and it ranged from $33,000 to $128,000. This contract is for 60, so it was right in the middle. That concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, feel free to answer.
Open up the public comments. Close public comments, and the reason I wanted to pull, and Mr. Fugatz wanted to pull, I'll let him ask his questions after me. I'm kind of a road geek, it's some of the stuff I do in my personal life, and I'm really excited with this technology. So the only thing I'd like to see in the future is all the RFPs put into the staff reports, so we have an opportunity to review all those. And, but I'm very familiar with most of the companies that were doing this, is they've been very active in the community. So Applied Research Association, I haven't ever dealt with them, but reading through the request for proposal and reading their technology, it's really up to date. I think it's gonna give us a leg up. I was surprised they could do as many roads as they could for this cost in our community, and this is a roadmap to the future for us on putting pavement management in effect. The bigger issue always is trying to put together a plan that's cost effective. So when you put together a plan, you usually put it into categories, and then you try to plan to fund those, and it doesn't always happen that way. So hopefully, when this plan is put together and get to come back and review it, you'll be able to see how many years out they're planning and how much the cost is per year. But the more, the more, the thing I like the most about it is the technology that'll be used. You can walk so many miles of road, and they'll usually average them on what they think they look like, but when you have this technology with the vehicle driving over, it's gonna give you images and know all kinds of information that you wouldn't always know. And if I'm correct, the system they're using can actually, it shows and gives a recommendation on the penetration of the asphalt down to the base.
It's 3D imaging for how deep the cracks are, so it'll be if it's a fresh crack or it's an older crack, whatever that is, multiple cracks, driving lane, wherever it's at, so yeah.
So if we go back to the initial part of this meeting, when we were talking about Pearson Boulevard, how bad that is, if you look at how many years ago that was done, and what needs to be done to that road, this will help, doing a grind and overlay is a lot more cost effective than going down and replacing the whole road with new base, and so this is gonna give you a really good roadmap to all the needs, so I'll stop geeking out on this. Questions?
I'm just gonna quote you, if I heard you correctly, we're developing a roadmap for a roadmap.
Yeah. That was technical. Mr. Fugatz?
So what was the last time that we, what do they call it, a PCI?
PCI rating, yeah.
When was the last time we did a PCI rating?
I believe we did it in '21.
'21?
Yes.
Did I get a copy of that?
Yes.
What, it shows our overall rating?
78 was our average.
That's pretty low, right?
It's actually pretty high, from 1 to 100, yeah, so it's actually really good.
Okay, so I remember back, was it 2009, we went out to Bonds and paved 34 miles of roads in the city, and back then, it got everything up to 100, and we really haven't been on a rotational basis, taking care of a section every five years with slurry, or whatever the recommendation is for slurry. And so we've been effectively spending our roads. So now, what's gonna come out of this is we're gonna see what the condition is, and then they're also gonna give us a plan for high, whether you have the money in your budget or not, they're gonna give us, here's what you need to do to, one, bring your roads up to condition over this amount of time, here's the ones that can still be saved, and here's the one that you've let deteriorate too far, and now you need to do, probably, I think it's practical, to grind and overlay, because fully engineered roads, you probably only get, you know, if we'd be lucky, get five miles of roads done. Okay, so I'm happy to see this. When do you think the results will be back?
I believe they have a four-month program, but don't quote me on that, but they have a pretty fast turnaround.
When we first came out with this, remember Don Schulte and I, and I forget who the other woman was, who was with us, helped us, we had a little subcommittee, and we actually drove every street in here, looking at the PCI rating, comparing it to what, anyhow, so back in the day when you're young and exuberant and wanted to get into the weeds. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Entertainer motion? There's a motion, did you want a second? I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
If anyone else in the public that did not comment at the beginning of the meeting would like to comment now? See nobody coming forth. Before we adjourn, just want to announce that on November 5th, which is our normal council meeting night, is considered off night because of what's going on that night. There's an election. The Planning Commission will meet on November 12th, and the Public Safety Commission on November 14th, and the council will be back here on November 19th. We are adjourned.